I'm just gonna go tomorrow, early, five in the morning.
Okay, let's get that here.
Yes.
I haven't met you.
I'm Bob, the new guy.
Bob, the new guy.
Yeah.
Interesting last name.
I'm John. Used to be the, yeah.
I've been new guy.
Used to be on the commission years ago.
He's new, but he's not new.
Yeah.
Recycle.
Yeah, recycle. She talked me into it, the mayor.
So I haven't heard of any. Should make you an alternate if everybody shows up, I guess.
Okay. Means I don't.
You don't vote, but I can give your. John?
Yeah.
When we get done with introductions and the pledge and things and we get to the public hearing, you grab those sheets if you want.
Okay, yeah.
Since you're the closest.
Yeah, do you know what the password is? It's okay.
I don't know, maybe I can figure it out.
Hey, good to see ya.
See ya. Hello, hello.
Welcome.
Hi Scarlett. There's someone from the fire department. It's gonna be here. Fire thing, so. It's such an unusual name, isn't it?
I've heard of it before.
Oh, look at this.
You wanted to say.
Do you know the password?
There's a lot still coming in, so. Hi, Emma.
John, listen.
What is it?
She'll have to look it up.
I guess one point from one up to capitalize. First up from the fire department.
Pizza don't have that. I think it's about the. I'll say it wrong anyway. Those French names.
Sorry, excuse me.
Grab a chair.
How are you?
Keep it turned around, but now you'll do that.
This is where I'm supposed to be sitting?
Yeah, I'm a callable person.
So how have you been? Great, great, that's awesome. So far, so good. Just a little busy week, but that's okay.
I like the ketchup week. And I still feel like I'm a ketchup.
You're getting closer though.
Yeah. My children run away.
Now we can start, Joe's here.
I heard you started already.
All right, well, good evening. Thank you for being here. We'll go ahead and get started.
See if one of these will work.
I'm Bob Hinke, I'm the Chair for the Planning Commission. And we have John Peterson and Bob Perry, who won't be voting tonight. He's an alternate, he'll share his thoughts and opinions, but won't be a voting member. And then we have Julie Martin and Michael Fortune and Joe Chambers. And I've asked Bob Perry if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Please stand. Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance should apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, the first item is the approval of the minutes. Any thoughts on the minutes from last meeting?
I was online, but I didn't have any sound. I voted by the little hand raise button, so I don't know if that would count towards anything.
I would say yes. I didn't realize, I knew she was trying to get online, I didn't realize she had gotten online and since she didn't, wasn't able to speak, I didn't know, so. But her vote should count, and I, um, I guess you voted the same way the rest of us did?
I did.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, any other, any other concerns about the minutes? Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes from our September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Julie seconds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you. All right, now is the time for public comment versus the, uh, the public hearing that we will have in just a minute. So, public comment is for anything that does not relate to what's on the agenda. I assume most of you are here for what's on the agenda. Um, but I will turn the time over, was there anything through email or anything?
Um, for, for an item, not general.
Okay. Uh, I'll turn the time over to the rest of you here, if there's anybody who has something they would like to share that does not relate to an agenda item. Okay, then we will close the public comments and we'll go to the public hearing. John, do you mind grabbing that? And I apologize, uh, the room's not big enough, we don't have enough chairs. Okay. We have a pretty good list of people who would like to share their thoughts in the public hearing.
On both matters or just one? Does it indicate?
It doesn't indicate, so. So we'll start with, well, the first public hearing is the wetlands urban interface.
Wildland.
Oh, sorry, I said wetlands, in a wildlands urban interface proposed code amendment. And maybe, I'm not sure how you're divided up, if there's people who would like to speak to that, but I think what I'll do right now, because I'm not sure, because we have the two items, if there's somebody who has signed up and would like to speak to the wildland urban interface proposed code amendment, please come forward and state your name. I kinda guessed that, but I wasn't sure, so. Okay. All right, um, and nothing online for that?
I don't think we have anything online for that one. And, uh, and without the public hearing, if there's nobody here for it, then when we get down, we could introduce a little bit more when we get down to the ordinance.
Right.
We do have a member of the fire department coming. We do have, okay. I, uh, don't, don't count, don't, don't, don't put up your hand if he asks you to count, cause, anyway. But when we get there, we could have him give some background, unless there's public comment, then we can introduce it now, if we don't, then.
Right, I, I think since there isn't, I think we'll close item number two as far as the public hearing, so we can get on to while the purpose most people are here for, so. So we'll close item number two and, um, go to item number three. Residents for persons with disabilities. And I do have the list here, so I will call you up. We'll start with Shay Studinger. Please come forward.
I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Shay Studinger and I am, uh, Studinger, yeah, doesn't matter. Um, I'm a resident of Providence City. Uh, I want you to know that the community supports what the city is doing to clarify this ordinance. To state that the occupancy limits apply to all homes regardless of who lives in them. This has nothing to do with one home or any group, but rather that we all abide by the same ordinance and law. If residents disagree with this clarification, there are other avenues that they can take to get exceptions. Uh, this is not the avenue. We have a large number of people here, obviously, um, those for and for those against, but this large number of people that are here are in support of the city. We want to be respectful of time for both sides, um, and so we'll leave our side with just a couple, two or three speakers. Again, we wanted to thank you for bringing this, uh, to a hearing where we can support you in the clarification of the ordinance. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a lot of people checked public hearing, so I'm assuming you'd like to speak. I'll just go through them and, and if you're not interested, that, that would be fine, so Perry Hilton.
No thanks.
All right, thank you. Brienne Davies. Ernie Diaz. Paul Barr. Nicole Henry. Tiffany Bergio. Bergio, okay. Uh, somebody rich.
No thank you.
Sorry. Colin Covington. I feel like a teacher calling raw right now. To do that, all right. Heather Leishman. Uh, Sheridan Willi- Williams? No, I'm not sure what that says. Sheridan?
Good speed, but no thanks.
Okay. Uh, Lauren Hymus. Damon Anderson.
No thank you.
Jay Hymus. We got her. Got to take her.
Try and make this as fast and painless as possible. My name's Jay Hymus, I'm the CEO of Clear Recovery of Cache Valley, as well as the CEO of Stepping Stones LLC. Uh, I, I've got several pages that I've prepared to read here, I'll just read through them as, as brief and steady as I can. Uh, I intend to provide, provide a full analysis of Providence City and zoning, zoning actions and proper variance directives, proposed amendments to Providence City Code one-three-dash-two. The city subsequent actions, actions that constitute discriminatory interference under federal and state disability housing laws. Clear Recovery of Cache Valley has initiated establishment residential treatment facility at eight-sixty-nine South, five-hundred East to serve individuals of substance use and mental health disorders. These individuals fall squarely within the protections of the Fair Housing Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, Utah Fair Housing Act, and Utah Code ten-dash-nine-eight-dash-five-one-six. mandate equal treatment and prohibit municipalities from imposing barriers, additional requirements, and retroactively zoning changes targeting disability-related housing. Clear Recovery began the state licensing process and met all the pro, all, all program approval conditions through the Department, Utah Department of Health and Human Services. During this time, Providence City directed the applicant to pursue, uh, zoning variance. The direction was legally improper, variances are not applicable to disability housing, and no variance pathways exist in Providence City's code for the category for residential use. Furthermore, Utah Code ten-dash-nine-eight-dash-five-one-six expressly prohibits, prohibits imposing additional zoning procedures beyond those required of non-disabled, excuse me, non-disabled families living in a single, single-family dwelling. Despite this, the city required a variance resulting in avoidable delays, costs, and discriminatory procedural burdens. Following this, neighborhood opposition arose, and shortly thereafter, the city introduced and proposed amendment to Providence City Code one-dash-three-dash-two. This amendment seeks to narrow definitions, attach disability housing to dwelling type restrictions, and introduce occupancy language inconsistent with federal and state protection. The sequence of events indicates the direct response to Clear Recovery's application and constitutes retaliatory zoning. To the, um, Fair Housing Act, uh, under Utah, forty-two USC, three-six-zero-one-dash-three-six-one-nine, municipalities may not enact or enforce zoning practices that discriminate against individuals with disabilities, excuse me. The, the act prohibits disparate treatment, disparate impact, and actions to interfere with equal housing opportunity included, included, included the imposition of special procedures or retro, retroactive codes, changes aimed at disability housing. And for the sake of time, I'm just gonna read a few of these codes. Um, well, the American Disabilities Act Title II, Utah Code ten-dash-nine-eight-dash-five-one-six, Utah Fair Housing Act, Utah Code fifty-seven-dash-twenty-one. In the retaliatory amendment code to PC one-dash-three-dash-two. The city proposed amendment contains language that attempts to tie disability housing to the structure-type dwelling institution. Oh, I think I said institution. Limitation, sorry. The disable, to tie disability housing to structural dwelling type limitations, introduce restrictive definitions not present in the original code, imply occupancy controls, narrow protection, and assumingly retroactive after the rules, alter the rules after an application has begun. Um, the city's, the city's attempt to move the goal, goalpost is awful, also unlawful. Utah, further Utah's vested rights doctrine prohibits cities from altering zoning rules. Midstream land use applications must be reviewed under the code in effect at the time of the application was submitted. Providence City, City's attempt to rewrite code piece, Providence City Code one-dash-three-dash-two after Clear Recovery relied on the original language is a direct violation. Future protections and community impact. This matter extends far beyond Clear Recovery. Changing the code will harm all future disabled residents, including those with addiction, mental illness, neurodivergence, developmental disabilities, mobility impairments, traumatic brain injuries, and severe medical needs. These individuals deserve a safe, supportive housing without discriminatory barriers. Weakening the current code could endanger vulnerable members of the community and contradict federal and state policy objectives prioritizing community integration for persons with disabilities. Clear Recovery is fully protected under state and federal law. The city must uphold the code as it exists when the application was submitted, and must not impose retroactive amendments or discriminatory burdens aimed at preventing disabilities, gosh, excuse me, disability-related residential treatment. Clear Recovery will proceed with its residential facility at eight-sixty-nine South, five-hundred East. The city is urged to maintain the current code, not only for this application, but for all future disabled residents. Um, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, whether you support what we do or have concerns, I appreciate the chance, the chance to speak directly to you. I want to start by speaking to those who might be in recovery. You are family, you are neighbors, you are part of this community, you matter. You are defined by the courage and willingness to rebuild your life. You deserve a safe place to heal, and Providence community is where people take care of each other. To the residents who support the treatment, thank you. I cannot do what I do without compassion and strength of the people in this valley. To the residents who oppose this project, I want to say with respect, I hear you. I understand change is uncomfortable. But I want you to know exactly what we are building and what we are not building. This is not a halfway house. This is not a place where people come and go unsupervised. This is a structured residential treatment facility with twenty-four-hour staff, clinical oversight, medical oversight, and medical supervision, and a controlled therapeutic environment. It is safer and more structured than many hospital floors. Our clients are people who want help and are actively engaged in treatment. They are not a threat to the neighborhood. Communities with treatment centers often have lower crime, crime rates because people receive the help instead of being left untreated. Clear Recovery has followed every requirement placed before us. We have completed our DHHS program approval. Our licensing review is underway. We serve individuals with substance use, mental health disorders, which under federal and state law protect these disabilities. We are your neighbors. Out of respect for everyone here, I want to state our position very clearly. We are moving forward because we believe in this work. We're moving forward because people in this valley need help. We are moving forward because recovery saves lives, strengthens families, and creates safer communities. We're moving forward because the law supports access to treatment and the right for disabled individuals to live in residential neighborhoods. Each person in, in recovery deserves dignity. Every family living with addiction deserves hope. Every community deserves resources that save lives. We are not here to divide this town. We're here to heal the people who live in this town. Treatment does not cause problems. Treatment solves problems that already exist. Clear Recovery is committed to be in a responsible neighborhood, a safe facility, and a place where lives are rebuilt. We will run a professional, supervised, licensed facility, and we will make the community proud of the work done inside that home. Thank you for your time and listening tonight. I am committed to working with this community every step of the way, and I am open and available for any conversations with all of the neighbors, and I fully intend to have a community meeting prior to accepting our first resident. I have no further comments or clarifications tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Um, we'll continue, Brooklyn Smith.
Hi guys, my name is Brooklyn. Um, I, I am a lot less prepared than Jay, so I'm gonna make this pretty short. Um, so I've been researching and studying addiction counseling, and I, that's what I'm in school for, that's what I've been focusing on. And what I found through all my research is that there is a huge deficit in Utah for treatment, and seeing how hard it has been to open up this treatment center, I've kinda seen how hard it is to get normal people, these are our neighbors, our families, our friends, that need help, and there's nowhere for them to go, because every time something like this tries to open up, it's kinda shut down at every corner, and we need this help. Addicts need this help. They're normal people. And I know everyone, a big concern that I've heard is that people are worried about the crime rates in these neighborhoods going up, and that's not true. I've done so much research, I've analyzed so many statistics about this, and crime rates in areas with access to treatment actually go down. It, it's making our neighbors, neighborhoods safer, and it's keeping our kids safer from drugs. If there's nowhere for people to recover, they're just not going to, so, um, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thanks, Kay.
Thank you, Brooklyn. Benj, Benjamin Baumann, I guess?
Hi.
Nope.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, May?
Hickey.
Hickey. Oh, okay. Thomas Chandler. Nina Burse?
How are you guys this evening?
Good.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have this hearing, um, and, and as well to speak. I also did not prepare like Jay did, but I am a client of Clear Recovery. I have been a client of Clear Recovery since August of twenty-twenty-three. Um, when I, when I searched for help and I searched for treatment centers and residential treatment centers here in the valley, there was nothing available other than another treatment center that exists. It has a waiting list, it, um, there are some issues there that some other former residents have spoken of, but my only option was to go to Ogden or Salt Lake, leave my family, leave my support system, and stay in a residential treatment center in another city for three to nine months, depending on my recovery status. Um, coming back here and, and finding out about Clear Recovery and being able to take advantage of their day program literally saved my life, but it would have been much easier to have been able to live in a facility where everything was focused on me and my recovery. I don't know if you know how many, how many addicts use due to mental health problems. People don't just go out and drink. People don't just go out and use drugs. We are a community just like your neighbors. They may not have admitted it, but we are struggling with mental health. We are struggling with physical impairments. And we use drugs and we use alcohol to numb that, because we don't have the help that we need. I have every doctor tell me do this, do that, still in pain, have not drank, I'm over two years clean, but Clear Recovery still supports me. I still go there for therapy. I still go there for the, the floats that help with the magnesium and the pain in your body, and then overstimulation in your mind. I don't know that this is about the definition of disability, or I don't know if it's about addicts, right? Or really the number of people in the house. But even two years clean. I applied for another job last night, okay? This is part of the application, and I'd like to read it to you. Please indicate whether you have a disability. How do you know if you have a disability? A disability is a condition that substantially limits one or more of your major life activities. If you have or have ever had a condition, you are a person with a disability. Disabilities include, but are not limited to, alcohol or other substance use disorders, autoimmune disorders, lupus fibromyalgia, rheumatoid arthritis, HIV/AIDS, blind or low vision, cancer, cardiovascular disease, and then it goes on, it's, it's this long. But, but if you notice, the very first disability they listed was alcohol or other substance abuse. So if the question is, are we disabled? Is our community disabled, and do they need support? The answer is yes. And I've heard a lot of rumors, I'm, I'm very active in the community, since, since going to Clear, I have actually spent the last two years of my life supporting women leaving domestic violence, low, other low-income families, people who are unhoused, and others in the recovery community. And I've heard the things that are being said about the house. I've heard the concerns about the level of criminals that are going to be in that home. And, and those rumors are not true. Those rumors that they, Clear has a very vast background. Research, they don't even let people with, with high-level criminal activities into their day program. Like, this is, this is more of a hospital. Like, this is, this is more of a hospital clinical-like setting than it is a house that they're just opening to take anybody in. Um, all of us were, were fully vetted before we were even allowed to attend the day program. So I just wanted to stand up and let you guys know, we're real people. And it's hard. It's really, really hard. It's hard to get clean and it's hard to stay clean. But if you're, if you are able to have that house, that residential setting where every single thing about you is addressed on a daily basis and supported, then you have much better odds of maintaining your sobriety. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nina. Um, Jamie Brager. Brigham Cook. Heidi Westover.
Hi, my name is Heidi Westover and I'm a grateful recovering addict. I, I have eleven years clean. Um, I'm an acceptable, uh, wrong word, but I am, I am part of this society. I am a productive member of this society. I grew up in Providence. I went to Providence Elementary. My grandfather was the janitor at the elementary school for many, many years. I have roots here. Um, I'm here to support and to simply reach out to the parents that are concerned about this, about Clear Recovery in their neighborhoods. As I mentioned, I, I am in recovery. Um, I have an adult child that is in active addiction. And as, as a parent to, to other parents, I hope they had never, ever have to go through that hell and to know those demons and that, that misery of having their child struggle with this disability of addiction. I am so very grateful that recovery is available, um, not only to me, but to my child. This resource is needed in our communities. And I support Clear Recovery. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Um, Miranda, somebody. Sorry, I couldn't read your last name. I know you come in and you're kind of in a hurry and you write your name down and then I'm supposed to read them, so.
You're sorry, my bad. Well, hello, everyone. I'm Miranda Vanderbeek. Um, that's last name. So I am really honored to be here today. So I, um, I'm pretty emotional about it. I've been trying to figure out all of the things I've wanted to say. So I'm just going to read what I wrote. I promise you, I did not chat GPT it, but I probably should have, but, um, so I am a therapist at Clear Recovery of Cache Valley and/or a counseling. Um, but as someone who was raised here in Cache Valley, I grew up just down the road from Providence in Millville. Um, surrounded by the mountains, the fresh air, the open fields, the yellow-bellied marmots that are my favorite, um, and the sense of calm that fills this part of the valley. These are the things that have shaped me and they are the things I believe can shape healing. I am here to share why I feel so strongly, so personally, and so professionally that Providence, Utah is an ideal, safe, and deeply meaningful home for Clear Recovery of Cache Valley's residential facility. Providence already is a place where people come to breathe. It has a rare kind of peace that cannot be artificially replaced. The mountains are grounding, the air feels clean, and there is a sense of safety and community that is unique to this specific area. And I want to emphasize something very important. Clear Recovery of Cache Valley already serves this community through our outpatient facility, which is located already here in Providence, Utah. We have built relationships here. We have supported clients and families. We have worked with local professionals, churches, and neighborhoods, nonprofits. This community already knows us and we have seen firsthand how supportive and compassionate Providence can be. Adding a residential program here is a natural, safe, and meaningful extension of the work we are already doing. Clients in recovery are often overwhelmed, discouraged, or unsure of themselves. At Providence, we can offer a quiet, peaceful surrounding, a deep sense of safety and calm, access to mountains, open space and nature, the ability to reconnect with God, spirituality, or the universe. Community values grounded in kindness, family, and support. These are all therapeutic in itself. Growing up in Millville just a minute away, I know how healing it is to be surrounded by the things we sometimes overlook. The views, the changing seasons, the wildlife, the quiet mornings, the fresh valley air. For our clients, these experiences are grounding and they can often be life-changing. In Providence, clients will have the opportunity to take nature walks or enjoy bike rides like I did as a kid, play pickleball, exercise, engage in movement, participate in religious or spiritual activities if they choose to, sit outside, breathe deeply, and reconnect with themselves as well as others. They will experience peace that supports emotional regulation and recovery. Inside the home, our clients will learn the essential life skills of cooking and meal planning, even if they don't want to, um, budgeting, cleaning, taking care of laundry, many different duties and responsibilities that will help them maintain the pressures of real life. Participate in group therapy process sessions and skill-based classes, establish structure through a daily schedule, build friendships and healthy social connections, learn coping strategies and emotional regulation skills, but most of all have twenty-four-seven support from a trained and compassionate team. This isn't just housing, this is healing. It is teaching people how to live again safely, responsibly, and with dignity. Our safety procedures are thorough, evidence-based, and non-negotiable. Every client is fully assessed before admission. They're screened for risk factors, needs, and suitability, monitored and supported by trained staffed staff guided through a structured schedule with house rules and expectations, provided supervision, accountability, curfews, and daily check-ins. Supported with crisis protocols, emergency procedures, and staff available twenty-four-seven, connected with families, caseworkers, um, and any of those that may need to be involved, given consent, and given consistent therapeutic oversight and case management. Um, also, we take safety seriously and I feel that's the common thing that is what we are all striving for here today. Locating our residential facility in Providence offers major advantages. A calm, safe, peaceful, healing environment, a supportive community rooted in fam- family values, access to nature and recreational opportunities, a chance to integrate spiritual, religious, or mindful practices, opportunities to build life skills and independence, close proximity for Cache Valley families to visit, increased structure, accountability, and safety, access to our outpatient services that's just minutes away, a compassionate trained staff that is fully dedicated to each individual, a healing environment I would trust with my own children or loved ones. And I do truly mean that with my whole heart. If, you know, someone I loved ever needed residential care, I would fully and completely feel safe and so grateful for them to be able to receive the care in Providence. I would trust this community with them. This facility will also strengthen the community, I feel like, and Providence residents. More mental health support resources. We will have more trained professionals working within the city. Stronger partnerships with schools, churches, and local organizations. Increase safety by providing responsible supervised care. Job opportunities for residents, a reduction in stigma that is surrounding mental health and recovery. Opportunities for education, outreach, and community involvement. A reputation for compassion, responsibility, and leadership. Clear Recovery is not a burden to a neighborhood. We are a resource, a support system, and a partner. One of my greatest hopes, both as a therapist and as a mother, is to reduce the stigma around mental health and recovery. Stigma isolates people, pushes them into silence, and often keeps them from seeking help. Providence has an opportunity to lead, to show that healing deserves dignity and that people deserve support. We welcome the community, the court, and anyone who would like to, to learn more about what we offer and what our services include, what our treatment philosophy is, what safety procedures we have, our classes, our groups, our skilled-based curriculum, our outpatient program that is already operating successfully in Providence already. Um, we are very committed to transparency, education, as well as partnership. As someone who grew up just five minutes away in Millville, as a therapist who deeply loves this work and is a community member who believes in compassion and safety, I fully believe Providence is the right place for Clear Recovery of Cache Valley's residential program. This city is very peaceful. It is safe. It is grounded and it is healing. It is exactly the kind of environment where our clients can rediscover themselves, rebuild their lives, and begin again. Thank you so much for your time and your trust in willing to listen with open hearts.
Branton Allison Fonsbeck. Is that her? Okay, okay, sorry, I guess. Oh, sorry, okay, I missed that. All right. I thought she was getting up stuck. Emily Basset Collier. Jeremy Collier. Kim. Thank you. Wade Gar.
Hi, my name is Wade Gar. Um, I used to be a resident of Providence. I, I grew up in Providence. Many of you probably knew my parents, Dean Farrell Gar. This is kind of nerve-wracking being up here. It's like being in court again or something. You know, but, uh, it was almost as nerve-wracking for me to be up here as it was ten years ago when I, uh, finally came to terms I was an addict. You know, um, addiction not only affects the addict, but affects the whole family. And through places like Clear Recovery is where the kid, the whole families can get that closure and that, um, that healing process, you know? I don't, I honestly can say, I don't think I would be here today if it wasn't for a program like Clear Recovery. I'd probably be dead. You know? We need places like this in this valley. You know, we do. Addiction is huge in this valley. You know, but it seems like a lot of people, you know, like to sweep the problem underneath the rug and turn the other way. But the problem's still there. And we need to face that problem head-on. You know, if it wasn't for places like Clear Recovery, not only I probably wouldn't be here today, but my daughter wouldn't get her dad back. You know? And that's what programs like Clear Recovery can do. Is it brings families back together and it gives people like myself a second opportunity to be a father again. Thank you.
You, okay, Olivia Tolman? Dallin Tolman? David Hobbs? Stephanie Colton? Christopher Basset? Brittany Stewart? Lynn and Susan Lemon?
I'll take just a minute of your time. Uh, I think the issue before you tonight is, um, a clarification of the code. It's not a change of the code. All we're asking is that, um, everybody be treated the same way. And I support that.
Okay, thank you. Relinda Stevens? Toni Jones? Addison Jones? Scott Campbell? Well, I can't tell because this whole column, nobody did actually, but, because there wasn't a column to do that. But anyway, okay. Janessa Moore, maybe?
I'm just gonna let you know, first I, I literally thought it was a sign-in sheet. So I just signature scribbled that name down, um, but I'm really glad that you could read that. That's like a talent, so.
I don't know about that, but.
Um, okay, hello, everybody. Hello, room. Um, my name is Janessa Moore. Uh, I'm a case manager at Clear Recovery and I've been with these guys for a few months now. Um, I am gonna read what I wrote, so if I don't make eye contact very much, I do apologize. Um, I'm a nervous speaker. So I'm here to support the soon-to-open residential facility, um, and the leadership of Jay Hymus and his journey to bring, um, much-needed treatment to Providence City. Every day in my work, I sit with people who are fighting to rebuild their lives. I see the human side of substance use disorder. Um, people who are not defined by their past, but by their desire to heal. Some are parents who want to reunite with their children and some are trying to break generational cycles. Some are simply hoping for the chance to live without constant chaos or fear. Outpatient treatment gives them support, but many need something deeper, a safe, stable place to live while they heal. That is why our residential program matters so much. A residential facility is more than just a building. For many of our clients, it is the first stable home they've had in years. It's where they can step away from triggers, rebuild structure, and finally have the space to grow. Substance use disorder is a disability and our clients deserve dignity and access to treatment, not barriers created by last-minute changes or narrow definitions. While these amendments may seem technical, their impact is deeply personal. They determine whether people in need will have a place to stabilize, recover, and move toward independence. Clear Recovery and our future residential program is not a burden to Providence. We are part of the solution. We help people become healthier, more stable, and more connected to the community. When you support treatment programs, you support public safety, you support families, and you support long-term community development. Providence has always been a community built on compassion and support, and I'm asking to continue that legacy by making decisions that protect access to care for some of our most vulnerable residents. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Okay, whoever signed in after, Janessa, because I can't read it. Okay. Brittany and Adam. No last name. Okay. Okay.
I thought it was a sign-in sheet as well, but my name's Brittany, and I am a recovering addict, and I'm also a child, adult child of a alcoholic parent, and.
Brittany, what's your last name?
Olson. I just want to hurry and just share my thoughts really quick. Well, my experience. My ex-husband got lifelighted randomly. He thought he was having like some chest breathing problems, and come to find out, he was actually having heart failure. And so, we found out that he has like this genetic mutated genetic gene, and he, he, he was an alcoholic, and he had to quit drinking or it would kill him. People that don't know how addicts roll, live, they don't care whether they're, they're told by a doctor, they'll die if they keep drinking or not. In their head, they have to keep drinking or they'll die. And so, he signed up, we looked for like outpatient or inpatient facility because that's what the doctor told him to do. He didn't want to quit drinking. I was seven months pregnant, and we had three kids at home, and it was really hard to find any help really at all. We found a day program in the valley, and as much as those are amazing, those are amazing. When you are like really sick with addiction, you just have to kind of check out from life. And so, those day programs don't allow you to be able to check 100% out from life. And so, he did the program, he did the work, but then he relapsed a lot, and he never fully committed. And so, when he finally fully committed to an inpatient, I had a newborn, and it was just, we, we couldn't find anything in the valley, and it was really stressful financially and just, it was really hard on my kids. And so, I had to drive down to Ogden at least once a week to do like family visits, and also, they have like classes you can take. That was really hard. And if we could just have more resources in the valley, like that would have been amazing for me and for my kids. And about six months later, my dad, who has drank for my whole life, he decided to get clean, and he also had to go out of the valley. And I don't know if you've ever dealt with an addict, but it's, it's, it's like they're grieving, you're grieving your loved one to have to watch them go through all that. And it's harder when it's farther away and you can't, you can't support them, and you feel like there's just that distance. And it's just, it just would be, it would have been amazing to be able to support my dad and my ex-husband if it was just down the road. They've both been clean for over five years, and now my, my kids don't have to grow up like I did with an alcoholic as a dad, and it's just, recovery is amazing, and just the resources that are out there are amazing. But we definitely need more and in the valley, the valley's growing, which means more addicts are coming in. We need to be able to support them and give them the life they deserve. And sometimes people don't have the means to be able to go out of the valley and get help, so I'm here just to support Jay Hymus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jordan Robertson? Okay. No Jordan Robert- Robertson? Okay. Ally Romney? Mike Clayton? Hannah Clayton? Shawna Beck? Beckett? Okay. Dave, probably left too, huh? Whoever signed in after Dave?
Bryant?
Present. No, thank you.
Okay. Anissa Barton, maybe? Yep.
I'll be pretty brief too. My name's Arissa Barton. I am a previous therapist from Clear Recovery, and working there gave me a great deal of respect for Clear Recovery and treatment program, programs like that, as well as those struggling with substance use disorder. And a lot of the clients I worked with there really just wanted to have a normal life. They just wanted to fit in. They wanted to be a part of something and felt like those opportunities were taken away from them. And some of them struggled with homelessness or finding like a safe community to belong to, and Clear Recovery really provided that community for them. And expanding this resource to have a residential place where they can live and build that community and live with other people who understand that would be just such a huge strength for people to really grow and be a part of the society they want to be a part of. That's all.
Okay, thank you. James Anderson?
My name's James Anderson. I am Lauren Hymus and Jay Hymus's son. I have been around addiction since the day I've been born, and I've never been addicted, and that is thanks to my mom and the help she got. She is the biggest motivator in my life to stay clean, not get involved with any of that partying, anything like that, just because she went through the steps, like the housing that they want to do. And I strongly believe that is something good, that people should have an opportunity to do. So, people like me can see their parents and my mom be a better person and have that comeback story from being in a horrible place, not really the best place. And now she's an entrepreneur. She has a nice place. She's way better, and she is my biggest idol. She's hardest worker. And I also work with all ex-addicts, and I want to say those are some of the best people I know in my life. They helped me in all aspects of my life. They tell me, don't do drugs, don't do any of that dumb stuff, and it helps me. It helps me stay motivated, stay on the path I need to. And I do sales for Vivint. I was in Kansas last week, and I knocked on the door. That was actually an inpatient housing. It's 12 guys. I talked to all of them. They're just amazing people. In that neighborhood, I sell security, one of the safest neighborhoods I was in that week. It was so hard to sell, just because, I don't know if it's them, but they're, they were there. It's a safe place, and I support my parents. That's all I have to say.
Okay, there are others that are out there in the hallway, perhaps? I can't see around the corner. Is there anybody that hasn't had an opportunity before we close this? Okay, those who haven't, okay. Here, and then here, and then back there, and then we'll keep going. Okay, go ahead.
All right.
State, state your name if you would, please.
My name's Daniel Hanson. Go by Dan. I am here to support Jay and his family and everybody that is here for recovery. So, my, let's just start with, I've never been an addict, but I've had PTSD. I served in the military from 2004 to 2012, and when we, when we were overseas, we lost three of our brothers-in-arms out of 300. That was an 18-month tour. So, we lost three overseas during war. We come home. VA was terrible at that time, and we couldn't get treatment. We couldn't do anything. Does anybody know the amount of service members that have PTSD or drug addiction? Go ahead, back here. You know how many?
Don't know how many, but I know one.
One, okay. It's about 20%. One in five. Since 20, let's see, would have been 2008, I have lost nine of the, of the people that came home to suicide and addiction problems. My biggest complaint about that is, we go serve, everybody loves us. We come home, and we have to fight to get treatment. We're looked at as substandard citizens from there on. I am a business owner of three companies in this valley. Okay? I got lucky. I came out of it with very minimal stuff. I didn't have to use any, any pills, anything to help me with PTSD. The one thing that did help me was sitting with other people and talking about our problems that have like-minded problems. Now, I'm no expert in addiction, but if somebody is standing over you telling you it's all gonna be okay, that has never had an addiction, that's probably not the person I want to listen to. I want to listen to somebody that has recovered and somebody that is an upstanding citizen in society now, because it gives them hope that there's a chance. Okay? I've hired a lot of these people that have addiction problems, and I, I look at them when they, when they succeed. I, I just love that way more than just a common person that has had a great family upbringing. I also don't think that we need to look down on these citizens, because how many of them have grown up with addiction in their own family? And 18 years of growing up in that family, how are you supposed to go out into the world? We, what, what's the term? Pick yourself up by the bootstraps? But it's easy to do that when you live in a hundred thousand dollar, or a, you know, a million-dollar home on the hill here. It's harder when you live in substandard living your entire life. Okay? So, I know that it's, it's kind of just a fight about a code, but it really comes down to, we just don't want these people in our community. Okay? I mean, you, you picked the code to kind of fight that. So, like I said, I help the family place. I help Little Lambs. I help Capsa. I help all these places, because I like to stop these problems before they fester in a child's mind. But what happens when the people are already grown up, or they grow up in a family that we don't talk about problems? So, more people in my unit died at home than they died overseas fighting. So, my, my addiction that I see from that kind of stuff, lot of mental health problems, and I don't like using that word a lot, but like, lot of mental health problems, where do they go? And Utah is the worst place I have ever seen. I, I, I served all over this country, and I saw tons of help all over in New York, New Jersey, Wisconsin, Oregon, all these other places. And we come back to Utah, and it is literally just, we don't talk about it. Okay? And, and we pick and choose who we want to help in this community a lot. So, like I said, I, I am a big help in this community, and I wish more people would do as much as I try to do. But what kind of a community do we want to live in? I want to live in one that helps the underdog. Okay? Not everybody here probably believes in Jesus. Okay? But who did he help the most? I guarantee about 80% of us go to church. Who helped? Who did he help? The people, the people that were struggling? Correct. He did help everyone, but who was he talking to mostly? Okay? Okay. The people that were poor, the people that were struggling. Okay? Thank you for saying that. Sinners. Okay? So, again, like, I mean, there's people talking about, hey, my child wouldn't be here if, if we, if I didn't, I didn't get the help. And I see about half the crowd just sat there. It's like watching what freaking State of the Union, right? Like, that should be a cheer from everybody, but half the crowd is just sitting here. Okay? So, I understand people have their own opinion. But man, I, I grew up in a Cache Valley that isn't that same place anymore. It used to be, everybody would show up and help. And it's gone to, we, we just kind of, the people up on the hill stay up on the hill. We don't talk. Okay? So, I really, really would love to just see our community standards come back to actually helping all people, not just the ones we deem worthy of our help. And so, again, my name's Dan Hanson. I appreciate everything you guys do. This is a tough job. And I really would love that we just see more in our community with helping everyone. So, let's stop it before it happens.
Good evening.
Name?
My name is J.C. Roden, more commonly known as J.C. Caressa in this valley. I am a current resident of Providence, just a few homes away from Hymus home. By profession, I am a teacher of at-risk students and students of disabilities. Personally, I am a mother of a six-year-old with a disability, a disability that affects his daily functions. I am well-versed with ADA, the American Disabilities Act, both professionally and personally. However, that's not what this meeting is about. To those in recovery, you are seen and respected. To those, to those with severe hearing loss, extreme learning disabilities, or accessibility issues due to disability, you are also seen and respected. We're all doing our best, and these things make us more alike than different, and there are reasons to make this hearing a hearing full of emotion. Aside from the emotion of each situation, mine, or everyone around us, it is important that as a city, we continue to support the clarification of this ordinance, the occupants, occupancy limits of, the occupancy limits apply to all homes, regardless of who lives in them and how each home or family is structured. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Comment in the back? You'll state your name, please.
My name is Chris Heki, H-E-K-I, and I actually live in the house immediately behind the one that's, that's in question here. We've, and we've heard a lot of great, a lot of great discussion tonight on, on, you know, reasons for helping people who are recovering addicts and stuff like that. My, I, I wanted to center my comments, however, about just kind of focusing on the code itself. I think that this may be a really good opportunity, if it hasn't already been done, to make sure, to take a really good, close look at those codes and ensure that they line up with both the Utah state laws, especially with, with regards to the ADA portions of those laws, as well as federal statutes, because if they don't line up with, with those statutes, that, that presents a risk for litigation when, when there are issues like this coming up, and litigation can be costly for the city as well as, as the, as the other people involved in that litigation. So, I just think that from, just from a city perspective, from a financial perspective for the city, that this may be a good opportunity to try to mitigate potentially future litigation risks by just, you know, ensuring that the, that the code is in line with, with, with existing laws on the books. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a little bit more comfortable doing this now.
State your name, sorry. Will you state your name first, please?
Oh, sorry. Mike Myers.
Thank you.
Now that I've had to go in front of the city council several times for my own business. There are plenty of stories of recovery, and I could share you mine, but you've heard them all night, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna shelf that right now. I don't see anything different here than what's happening in the NEST homes throughout the valley. If you're unfamiliar with the NEST homes, these are homes that people live in. They're supervised. They go out in the community. You see them cleaning bus stops, things like that, and they are all throughout the community. And there's absolutely no doubt that they put the community at risk. So, I just don't see any difference as far as a code between what Jay is doing with Clear Recovery and the NEST homes. And you actually, I would be really shocked if you didn't have a NEST home here in Providence, because if you don't, you will, because my dad just lives up here, and he's getting a client. He just lives up here, and my son lives on the hill. So, I'm actually living in Lewiston, but I just wanted to share that. Again, I got my own success stories with addiction. You guys have heard them all night long, so I'll save it. Just get out of the way, but, you know, it might be something worth looking into. I just don't see this as any different than a NEST home. So, thanks for your time.
NEST, by the way, NEST is a place where people with disabilities are in a home together. Yeah, yep. So, there's multiple of them around. They get three or four clients in a home. So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we, all right, two more comments, and then we'll close.
Taylor Berry is the name. I just want to clarify that the, what spurred the desire to amend the code during the variance, there was a question about whether or not residents for persons with disabilities meant residents, as it appeared elsewhere in the code. And so, that's all that this clarification is attempting to do, is just say. And so that's all that this clarification, clarification is attempting to do is just say that it is in fact a residential dwelling. There's been a lot of talk, even questions of discrimination that have come up. And I don't know if you guys have the proposed change in front of you to the code. At the bottom from the Fair Housing Act, it says, "A local government may generally restrict the ability of groups of unrelated persons to live together as long as the restrictions are imposed on all such groups." Defining these residences as normal residences, that's all that does. Uh, there is no discrimination there. It applies to absolutely everyone. That's it.
Thank you. Last comment.
Grant Naylor is my name. Um, I don't have anything prepared. I came in late and just been listening and I thought I'd give my two cents. I'm a, uh, I live in a neighborhood that we're in question. I have two young children. Uh, Jay's proposed location is right next to their bus stop. I'm not sure if that brought, has brought up before. I want to make sure everyone knows, one of my daughters has autism, so I understand the disabilities piece. Um, but she's highly impressionable and I don't feel comfortable as a father having, and I don't want to sound stereotypical and I feel like it may be taken that way. But it's location. I fully agree with everybody that said we need one of these places in Cache Valley and I a hundred percent agree. But I think a large business like that needs to be in a commercially zoned area for multifamily housing, not single-family housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I'm McCall. I'm here from Logan.
McCall.
Lishman.
Thank you.
Yes, so I'm office manager at Clear Recovery currently. I've been there for a year, almost exactly. And before that, I managed a group home for disabled adults. It's called Futures Through Choices. We are in Logan and by the Aquatic Center and Cafe Sabour. So these residents are currently my neighbors. There's twelve of them and they are the best neighbors. I couldn't have asked for better neighbors. And in fact, I can guarantee when I get home today, someone has pulled my garbage can in from the road. So I'm very excited about that. Um, like I said, there's twelve of them that are living there currently. Best neighbors I could ever ask for. Sometimes things get loud, but you know, it's always, it's rewarding to watch these people who were told you are, you are meant to be in a hospital. You are meant to be in a clinical setting. You are not meant to be in an apartment or in a duplex. You're not meant to be in society. I see these people leaving and going to work every day. I see them going and doing jobs maybe not necessarily all of us would want to do. Um, folding laundry, working at gas stations, picking up dog poop, raking leaves, you know, just so they can get a few dollars to walk down to the gas station and get their soda. Because that really, really means a lot to them. And watching these individuals live with each other, learn from each other. Sometimes, you know, it's not always the best. We learn from our siblings and that's what they're like. They're like siblings. Um, sometimes they pick up little traits from others that maybe is not the best one and we have to help them out with that. Um, but seeing them grow and learn from each other and how much they love each other and rely on those relationships and then can take those experiences that they have out into the community and have those experiences with people in the community is really, really cool to see. It's really rewarding. Um, I found myself deep in addiction during that job, so I quit. I chose to quit. I couldn't do it anymore. And it was a very stressful job. And coming to Clear Recovery and seeing all of these people who they want to change their lives. You don't go to recovery for fun. Recovery's not fun. It's not easy. It's worth it, but it's not fun and it's definitely not easy. Um, as I sit at that desk and I answer phone calls every day, without fail, we get three or four calls asking about residential. And these are people who maybe the trigger is in their home. Um, could be a spouse, could be a child, a parent. And it could be somebody who causes a lot of trauma for them and they need to get past that trauma in order to be sober. So providing them a sober place to live and to get, learn those skills, to work through all of that trauma or whatever the case might be. Um, and then reintroducing them into the community so they can be a, a member of society is amazing. Um, I currently, it's like I said, I currently live next to all of those neighbors. I'm about a hundred feet from them. I've explained that I'm near Cafe Sabour and the Logan Aquatic Center. There is also another residential treatment center that has a lot of complaints. I, I guess I will just say that. Um, but it's also in the center of Logan. And I don't know if a lot of people didn't realize that, but that's how close it is to all of you. It is right next to the Aquatic Center. So, um, we talk about bus stops and stuff like that. There's a bus stop out right in front of my house where I live, walking a half away from that other residential facility. I feel safe. I feel great. I take my dogs for walks early in the morning, late at night. We'll walk past both facilities. I'm greeted with waves. What kind of dog do you have? Can I pet them? You know, all of that kind of stuff and it just makes me happy to know that there's somewhere, whether it be great or not, but there is somewhere that those people, if they really want recovery, they can get recovery. Um, the difference between Clear Recovery and these other places, um, Clear Recovery cares. We're very person-centered. We don't, one shoe does not fit all. Um, it's very person-centered, so your treatment's gonna look very different from someone else's, but it's gonna be personalized to you and help you be long-term sober. So my whole point of that really was, they really are the best neighbors. They're very kind neighbors. And it makes me excited to see them fulfilling goals and getting back into the community and being able to contribute. So yeah, that's why I had fun.
Okay.
Robert, did you want me to read the emailed comments that we received or just acknowledge them?
No, I think we should go ahead and read them.
This emailed comment comes from Russell and Kira. Comments regarding a proposed code amendment to Providence City Code 1-3-2, definition of residence for persons with disabilities. May we return to our homes with a resolve in our hearts to be a little better than we have been in the past. May we be a little kinder and more thoughtful. May we reach out in helpfulness, not only to our fellow members, but also to those who are not of our faith. As we associate with them, may we show our respect for them. There are those who struggle every day with challenges. Let us extend to them our concern as well as our helping hand. As we care for each other, we will be blessed. Present Thomas S. Monson until we meet again, General Conference, October 2014. Mosiah 23:15, "To avoid contention is a natural extension of the second great commandment, that we love our neighbor as ourselves," end comment. Second comment comes from Shelley Nazar. Dear Planning Commission, I'll be out of the country during the upcoming meeting, but I wanted to send in a quick comment because this amendment is important. During the recent variance hearing, it became clear that our code has a gap. The definition of a residence for persons with disabilities didn't explicitly state that the standard occupancy limits still apply. Clarifying this now will help prevent similar misunderstandings in the future. As you review this amendment, I know you'll likely hear strong emotion from people who are frustrated by the variance outcome. I understand those feelings. I just hope the commission will remember that the decision was based on a thorough legal review and didn't meet the standards required by law. Please take my comments as a steady voice in the middle of all that. Addiction has touched my life and the lives of people I care about, so I understand the importance of stable, supportive housing in recovery. I also believe our zoning code needs to be clear and constantly applied, especially on sensitive issues. This amendment helps us strike that balance. To me, this change doesn't exclude or limit anyone. It simply clarifies the existing intent of the code so that group living is treated the same way across the board. With my past experience in line with these decisions, I've learned how much it helps when the code is written in a way that leaves little room for misinterpretation, especially on sensitive, sensitive issues like this. Thank you for the care and the thoughtfulness you're putting into this update. I truly appreciate the time you spend and the work you do to keep Providence a strong and supportive community. Warmly, Shelley Nazar, Providence resident.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, we appreciate everybody's comments and during this, uh, public hearing. I think I'll now close the hearing and we'll move on to the legislative actions, which we will get back to this. Uh, that's item five. We have an item four and we have some people here for that. And so we're gonna continue to follow the, uh, the outline here, the agenda. So item four, wetland or wildland, I keep wanting to say wetland. Wildland Urban Interface Proposed Code Amendment Recommendation. The Providence City Planning Commission Review Discuss and May Make a Recommendation to the City Council Regarding a Proposed Code Amendment to Providence City Code 967 Wildland Urban Interface Code. At this time, Scarlett, I guess.
I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start if that's alright.
Sure.
So one of the things, the, the state has passed a new law requiring certain things. They're requiring us to, uh, uh, adopt the Wild, Wildland Urban Interface Code, Building Code, the latest, uh, building code. Um, and so that is part of this is to update that. And, uh, and then part of this will be, uh, to update, uh, and adopt a map, a, uh, an area. So we can choose in that, uh, at what level. So there are various levels of, of fire risk. And, uh, so one would be, uh, for instance, on the Deer Fence Trail, uh, we could adopt a, a line along there that would affect anybody that builds a house above the Deer Fence Trail. Um, that's not many in Providence. We could adopt a line that is at the base of the, um, base of the bench, which would affect everybody that lives on the bench. Whatever that line is, and as, as the state moves forward to clarify, there will be, there will be a fee attached, based on your, on the square footage and on the risk of the home, that, uh, that, that there will be a, a additional fee assessed to your property taxes, that will go into, uh, the state. And I, I believe that is to, uh, to fight wild, um, wildland fire. And, uh, so because they've had a lot of wildland fires, um, there has been this issue come up. Uh, our own representative, Casey Snyder, was the, uh, um, was the signer on this bill, uh, was the sponsor on this bill. And, uh, so it comes, uh, from, from right here, uh, close, close to home, to us. Uh, we have, we have the, um, one of the fire, tell me your title. Operations chief with us and, uh, would, would love to have him come and, and add to my, my report there and give any additional information you'd like, if you would. But they all stayed for it and I am, I am so impressed because, because this really affects more people that, than they realize. This is one of those. That this is the first time the state is, is adding on to property taxes. This is a, this is an additional property tax, um, that, that, that is going above and beyond what the state has done previously. This is something, if you are unaware of this after this is done, you may have your next call to your own state representative. Um, I have met with him personally. Uh, I encourage everyone in this room that this may be a big enough effect to you that, that you'll want to, to, to phone him next. So, um, put that out there, that this is a big deal. I, I realize we get into the weeds on state, but this is a big deal too. So anyway, heat up for you.
Ryan did a great job. Uh, my name is Robert LaQuam. I'm the operations fire chief for Logan City Fire Department, which also provides fire protection for Providence City. So like Ryan said, the one thing that, um, it's the 2006 code that they're asking us to, to adopt. So HB 48 came out in the spring and it basically says two things. The first thing is the state's gonna come up with their own risk map. We don't know what the risk map looks like, what houses will be affected. We have not seen that map. Like Ryan said, kind of the, the line that we're using for woo wee right now, the Wildland Urban Interface is about a seven and that's kind of what Ryan has drawn in his map. And I believe it's in the agenda as one of the, um, action items. Um, the second part is the most, most important part for Providence and that's adopting the 2006 Wildland Urban Interface Fire Code. Because if we don't adopt it, the state says we need to adopt the code and we need to adopt a Wildland Risk Map. What we're gonna consider, anything within this area is what we're gonna consider within the Wildland, um, Urban Interface. If we don't adopt it, right now, we belong to what's called the CWS, which is the Cooperative Wildfire, um, System. And we pay into a fund by sweat equity, um, that we provide, every year, we provide through mitigation, preparedness and prevention. And we, it's like a forty-one hundred dollar, um, insurance fee. Because if there's a fire, like last year, we had a fire right at the bench that started in Providence. If that fire goes into state land and we do not belong to the CWS, we own the cost of that fire or Providence does. So just giving you an example of what it costs to fight a fire, this year, we had a fire in North, um, North Logan, sixteen acres, started in North Logan and went into state land. That fire was a million dollars for sixteen acres of all the air resources and additional resources. They're part of our fire district or, or that we provide fire protection and we provided the CWS for them. So it costs North Logan nothing, just the sweat equity of their fee, which is their participation commitment fee. So that's why it's super important because if we don't adopt this map and it don't, we do not adopt the code, then we are no longer part of the CWS system and that's an agreement between Providence. Ryan signs it every year between Providence and the state. So, any questions? And the risk map you'll see coming out sometime in June and that's when we'll probably get a gazillion calls, kind of your house falls in it. Because we don't know where line might be yet.
So, this is the map that we have currently that we would be looking at. Um, the state will come out with their own, um, so we're, we're guessing, uh, what they might come out and then they'll tell us whether we're right or wrong. But this is our best, this is our best guess and this is, uh, this is what we've talked with, uh, Casey about and, and he believes this. My understanding of what our discussion was is that this fits, um, hi- his intent in that bill. Um, I don't mean to speak for him, but, uh, but in my understanding that this is where that, that would be that seven. North Logan just adopted and I think they're about that six and a half to seven, so I think they're in that same. So we'd be consistent with, with some other cities. And Logan as well, so. So anyway, our recommendation as staff is recommending this for you to recommend, um, production. So at that point, we'll answer your question.
Just one clarification. So whatever Providence adopts, whatever the map they adopt, their line that they say is in their Wildland Urban Interface area, is there's no fees that Providence, you know what I mean? The, the state map of Providence Wildland Urban Interface is totally different. They're just saying we just have to declare an area and follow the, the code within that area. And that really only applies to new construction and then there'll be some, um, uh, mitigation for some houses they might have to do based on the code. But pretty much most people are doing what's required with the 2006 code. Does that make sense? But again, whatever Providence, their line is, it has no effect on what the state does. Because we can do a seven and the state can come way down and.
Right, and, and then, and then we'd be back into a different, we're back, we might be back. This may not be the only time you see this. We might be back.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, what does seven mean?
So if you go to, that's a great question. So if you go to the Wildland Risk Assessment Portal, it's called UREP in Utah. So if you type that in, you can go there and there's a map on there and you, you click on the map and then you'll be able to see, there's a, um, a tab that will say Structure Exposure Score. Um, and you click on that map and it can, you can kind of locate your home and it kind of like, see how it's got that, uh, orange marks right there? That's what they're, that's what a seven looks like. Anything within that orange would be, and it's based on what, what the structure exposure score is based on previous fire history, topography, based on, uh, previous, like I said, previous fire histories, kind of how they come up with this score. And that's what the state is gonna use, um, to develop their maps. Does that make sense?
And so if, if you're in that, if your home is in that or property is in that area, then you have to pay these extra taxes or does everybody pay?
So are you talking about Providence's map or the state map? There's two different, I, I know it's super confusing, love HB 48, so it's two things. HB 48 says we have to adopt the 2006 code. Okay, the Wildland Urban Interface, that's what it says in the, in the. The wildland urban interface two, that's what it says in the, in the legislation, letters, legislation. And then the second thing is we have to develop a wildland area that we're saying homes within this area is within the wildland urban interface. So that is thing one. The part, the second part with Ryan was talking about is the state statewide, they're making their own map. And it could be, we don't know what homes are going to be in it, quite a few. Homes are going to be within this, in the state risk map. And if your home falls within that map, you will be, you will pay a fee. They haven't listed the fee yet, so we don't know what the fees are going to, but it's going to be based on square footage. For the first two years, so 2006 and 2007, there'll be a fee. So if you have a 2,000 square foot home, everybody will pay, I'm just throwing some numbers out like 50 bucks. Now after, in 2028, you will pay an assessment fee, so assessor will come out here and they'll rate your home either from high risk, medium risk and low risk, based on your vegetation, based on your slope, based on kind of siding of your house, the roof material, your vents, you know, all your construction features. And if you have high risk, then you will pay assessment fee plus whatever they deem high risk to be. Does that make, so it could be.
Okay.
So, and the numbers aren't there yet. That's the thing that's super hard is when you go to the councils, they want to know what the, the fee is. We do not have a map. They said sometime around January, there'll be a map and we don't know what the fee is going to look like. But that's the state. So regardless of you adopt this, but if you do not, this, you're still going to get this. The state's still going to do this.
And we're deciding whether to adopt it or not?
You would be recommending to, for adoption. The state requires you to adopt it, you're recommending it to the, to the state, to the council to adopt it. And it has to be adopted by the end of the year, right?
And we have to have a map drawn. That's part of the second part of the option.
So there's a map, is that, do we? Do we get to adjust the map? Do we just say yes or no on the map? How is the map decided?
Uh, I was trying to get into the one you sent me, but, but. But I went to the link that you, that I got and it's, it's broken with the, with the one I got. But anyway, we can draw it somewhere else. If you say, hey, we'd like to follow the 1,000 East Street, we can do a street. We could move it, we could move that line, yes. So can you adopt, can you, can you recommend modification? Yes, yes, you can. We have simply taken what was, they separated into the numbers and I, I was trying to get that to load so that I could show you kind of the, the phase. But imagine that the next, so if this is seven, the six would come over into here and the bench. What's that?
Yeah, it's going to go.
Yeah, it, it's going to go, it's going to go west to, to cover the benches. A five will cover almost all the way into first west. So to kind of give that idea, there is some risk, probably all the way to first or second west. And, and at that point, if you adopted a, a five, and I, I apologize, I can't bring that up. But, but depending on where you're at, I can pull up Logan's to kind of give you an idea, or not Logan's, but North Logan's, I think I have. Let's see if I had their, here's their map. Just to kind of give you what they did is, is North Logan drew a, drew a line and they just kind of drew that line down. And then anything to the east of there. So they just, they just drew it on the, on the edge. So certainly there's.
Or the red line.
The red line, sorry, that red line. So there's an option for that. For simplicity purposes, we went with the figuring that the seven, the staff and recommendation is that following the seven is the, is what we believe is the probably most likely choice that will be followed in our research. So, but you, but yes, if you say, you know what, we really feel comfortable following the Spring Creek Parkway and, and drawing right along there because anything there. The reason why we have the, the, the trail here, the level here is that deer fence trail is a, is kind of a fire break. And we think anything to the, to the east of that fire break is probably at a, at a higher risk. And if somebody's going to build something on that side, that's a higher risk. And, and we think that, I believe that follows the intent. So this really follows, kind of follows that deer fence trail. If, if we were to draw it in, in, in red marker, I would have followed the deer fence trail. I believe this represents fairly close to that.
That's what Logan used with deer fence and the Bonneville shoreline is kind of what they did. Anything east of that is their wooey map. Again, it's totally separate than the state. So you can have that map. When you have that map and that line, that means you just have to follow the 2006 wooey code for Providence. And the state, whatever their map looks like, it could be lower. If it is, that's the homes will get a risk assessment and get a fee. So that's kind of the, does that? I know it's super confusing.
Yeah, I'm still confused as to why we need to have two maps. What, what's the purpose? I get, I get the states and, and they're probably going to move it west because they want a fundraiser to help fight fires.
Both, yeah.
And, and if you do the deer fence, they're not making any money and Casey Snyder's not going to be happy about that, I'm supposing. But what's the purpose of our map?
Cause we have to, cause according to, it's, it's, it's because of HB forty-eight. HB forty-eight states that we have to adopt the 2006 code, wooey code, and have a wooey designated area. I mean, in theory you can have it, we can bring it down to a four, right? Bring it down to, to.
Which a four would probably encompass the entire city.
But, but you can bring it down to a four. The state is high risk within the wooey. They would be along the bench. I mean, that's, and the only areas that would be assessed is the high risk map. So in theory, your map can look, you would be a little bit lower than what their high risk, because the high risk is saying this is the worst area. Does that make sense? And that's what the state is saying. Anything along the bench is the worst area for, for fire risk.
Okay, I, I guess I'm not familiar at all with this 2006 thing. So what's the consequence? For us, we already know the states can do their thing, but what's the consequence for us?
Not adopting it?
No, we need to adopt it, I get it. But if we moved it west, I mean, I see no reason to do that.
The only consequence of you moving to west is residents within that for new construction would have to adopt the 2000, would have to build their houses based on the 2006 wildland. And like I said, not really knowing, being expert with your building code. I'm sure you're probably meeting most of it. I have, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a fire because we kind of took the 2006 code kind of stuff modifications that will be different. But it's, has to do with siding, has to do with your roof. You know, no shake roofs within that area. So they, they would have to meet that construction for 2006. And residents that are within whatever wooey you designate, not the state, but what you designate would then have to, their vegetation plans would have to meet that 2006 current.
Okay.
It would probably have a.
And it's.
An, an insurance application too, if you.
That is in the code.
If you moved it down to a four, it would probably adjust your insurance risk as well.
Yeah, it, it might eliminate your insurance.
Yeah. Thank you, seven.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Robert then, or comments?
I, I, I have a question and I think I understand it. What are, what's the significance of those orange blotches that are, are west of the?
Right, you're talking about that's just outside?
Well, you've got a couple of blotches in.
They're saying that's high risk, that, that, that homes are within that wooey area.
Yes, at some point, yes.
You could, but the chances of it actually going through are probably slim.
At some point, there's a, there's a method to do it. We'll leave that as, that's a method to do it.
Yeah. So. We did not come up with this code. The most important thing is, is to have the insurance policy.
Who determined those orange, they're brown on mine.
The state, and that's based on, when you go on there, it's based on vegetation, previous fire history, previous vegetation that's around there. And like the gentleman said, you could contest it based on where you live. Like say you lived in an area that was all wildland and then now it's a big development, you know, based on old, I mean, the new maps should be fairly accurate, but. So.
So if you wanted to adopt, you could, you could, I mean, this is our, our, our spot. Cause we, we, we picked the seven and, and there is some, some blotches. But you could simply say it's the deer fence trail and, and recommend that that's what you, you would recommend. I, I mean, that, that would be, that would be an option tonight to say, well, we recommend it to, to follow the deer fence trail. Or we could, we could draft a line, but.
And then all those orange spots on the left are just.
Correct, that's just a map.
Right, that's correct. So anyway.
Okay, any other questions or comments or motion?
Thank you for your presentation, for doing your best to clarify.
It's super confusing, I know.
Why we need a map when they're going to make another map?
Well, that, exactly, well, well, welcome to our world, you know? We got four cities that we're trying to explain. This, this map that doesn't exist yet, it's super difficult.
We have another question.
Okay.
One question, is the forest service involved with this?
This is their program.
Okay.
It's actually passed by, like Ryan said, it's passed by Casey Snyder was the sponsor of the bill. So I mean, if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to him. And that's what I know North Logan's council reached out to him as well. So hopefully that, you know, they could make modifications to this up in legislation. But. What was your, what was your question?
If the forest service was involved.
So, so that, so based on the bill, the forest service, the forest service is developing the map. And when you go on URAP to look, if you want to go to that, that website I was talking about, Utah wildfire risk assessment portal. It's available to anybody. You can look at your home there to see where your risk is. That is through the forest service. But the map is, this whole program's run through the forest service. The forest service is responsible for when they come up with their map, to come out and do the wooey inspections, if your house falls within it. So they'll do the wildland urban interface inspections. But no one even knows what that looks like, what the, what their inspector's going to look like. And then after, like I said, if your house is not inspected, like you don't call them out there to inspect, then they will automatically assess you the highest risk. And you could go, if you do go to your home is a one, you know, like, I mean, three, which is the worst risk, you could do modifications to get you to, you'll never leave the high risk wooey area, but you can do, change your landscaping, change your siding of your house to get up to a, you know, one score. But again, I don't know what that, the prices are. So I apologize, like I said, this is, you know, this is a house bill that got passed and, and we're just trying to make the best of it. The most important thing is we do need to have this ordinance passed because it is an insurance policy be, you know, based on if we have a fire at the bench and goes into state land. They, they tied that to that, to make sure everybody would, would pass this. So.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. I have other comments, but I won't make them now.
You sure? Any other questions before I?
But you've done well. I do want to talk to Casey, but.
Feel free.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. This is a legislative action item, so we may make a recommendation to the city council or may not. Any thoughts or?
Well, I would make a recommendation that we recommend to the city council based off the information. And as you said, Ryan, you guys did the research with this as best you could. You also met with Casey Snyder and this is the staff's recommendation for adopting based on, on the research and everything at this time. I think it'll be interesting when the state map comes out that we see and then look at how we deal with that. But I would make a recommendation that the planning commission recommends to the city council.
Motion?
A motion, yeah, make a motion, excuse me.
Can I just ask one little question before let me vote? I see, I see a line on the, that goes straight up and down, which is the deer fence, right?
The purple line?
Yeah.
Well, that's the city's boundary line.
Well, I see two lines and they kind of split where the orange down at the bottom.
Oh, down here?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that, that, that's Millville City right there. So we're up here, so our boundary is here, Millville, this is Millville.
This area here is Millville. You got Millville City and this is part of there.
Millville has a little finger up on the side of us.
Oh, okay.
And then this is all Providence.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's trying to say that Millville's giving us.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Back to the motion.
All right.
Okay.
Which is what the staff is recommending, right, Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Here's, here's kind of a, the deep red, the dark, that's where we're at. You can see the, the, the six or the, yeah, the six. And then, I mean, some of that risk, you start to go down in, in from six to five. You can get all the way down onto, under the, under the west side of the highway pretty fast. So that's why we're staying up there. But, yeah.
Well, I would make a motion that we make a recommendation to city council that we, that they adopt the 2006 code and based and accept the recommendations of the staff based on the findings of facts, conclusion of law and conditions as set forth for the city code nine dash six dash seven and ten dash five dash seven as it relates to the wild, wildland urban interface code.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I think in layman's terms, we're basically saying, we want to do what you recommend, the city's recommending, follow the, the deer fence for that line.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no other comments? Let's vote. Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that concludes that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, PCC amendment, PCC one, three, two, residents for persons with disabilities. The Providence City Planning Commission will review, discuss and may make a recommendation to the city council regarding a proposed code amendment to Providence City Code one, three, two. Definition of residents for persons with disabilities. Scarlett, you, are you going to address us on that?
So it's been stated previously, there was some concern that our definition, which we had, didn't clarify where, what type of building. And so as we looked through the code, our original code, we felt like there were places throughout the code that meets, that helps with that clarification. But to try and find it in one concise area is not very easy right now, the way our code's written. So this basically takes the intent when you look at all the other areas and puts it in this one sentence. And then it does update the Utah code references so that they are the current references. We, ours were a little bit outdated, I think, previously. So the code changed a bit ago and we didn't update the references. The wording is still very much the same though. So we're not making changes to the substance. We're just clarifying in one concise place.
And what is that clarification?
It's the blue part. It says, which complies with the laws applicable to the type of dwelling being occupied. So it's not, it's not to make one thing different than another. So it's not, it's not to, um, make one thing different than another. It's just to say that whatever type of dwelling it's being occupied, that's the rule we go under, just like in zoning.
So, um, a couple of questions I had about this was, um, what, aren't there, are there occupancy limit or restrictions for rental homes?
Um, if you're relating, if you're, um, renting to a group of unrelated persons, the state code, um, says that, um, we cannot have a limit less than four. So if you want to rent to unrelated persons, you can have four unrelated persons living in your home.
So, and does that apply to this residence too?
That's what we're saying is our definition of family applies to dwelling units for families. That's what we're saying. That's part of the definition. I mean, there's other definitions. A single person living alone is defined as a family. Then a family, um, what, that you kinda think of with the head of the family and then those related to the head of the family. And then, um, no more than four unrelated persons.
And how many are they, do they want to have in this home?
Well, they wanted more than four.
That's not the issue.
Yeah.
That, that's totally off the point. This is just a code amendment.
Yeah.
I, I had a question on paragraph, new paragraph D. I read through that and I'm, I'm a little OCD. Is that, is that intended to read which is licensed for certified by, or is that a typo which should read which is licensed or certified?
Yeah, but I think what Joe's saying is, did we, uh, do a typo there? Which is licensed for certified, or should it say which is licensed or certified?
I sort of see it makes sense more that it's the latter, not the former.
I can look, well, I can't look it up really quick, but I can look it up to let you know.
I don't wanna vote for something that has a typo on it.
Joe, explain to me why it, it doesn't matter the, the number of persons in it.
Well, that's not the issue we're, we're talking about. We're not talking about, that was the variance hearing.
Okay.
This is just a code clarification.
I see. So all these people are here just because of this?
I have not, yeah. I thought they were here for the wilds.
But if this is just, I'm, I'm still unclear about what the, this does.
It clarifies the code. It's basically.
Not clear to me. Please clear it, clarify it to me.
Well, read it without the blue in it.
Well, I can't even see it, so my battery's dead, so I couldn't.
You're welcome to come down and read it online without. If you take the blue out of there, that's what our current code reads.
So I don't know if it was a typo a long time ago, or if it really is supposed to say which is licensed or certified. Yeah.
So it's either with the blue or without the blue.
The code currently reads without the blue. The amendment would be to add that, that additional line.
Ryan, can you enlarge what we're seeing? Thank you.
Take that down.
I, I have it both here.
Just what, what are the implications of it?
You said your battery is dead.
Yeah.
You're okay? You all right?
But I still don't understand the implications.
That doesn't mean you can't wreck it if you want to.
But at this point, it is, that is, I just wanted to make sure that that is a direct copy from the document.
Do you think it, it means for?
No, I think it's, it's, I believe it means the or, just as it was referenced here. I think it's the same, but.
So can anyone tell me what the implications of this is? Just.
The, the current.
I don't even know if these people are for this or against it, because I don't understand.
Really matter, it, it, I mean, you, you want to, you, you've, you've heard plus or minus and the, and the, any issues. Um, the question is, is, does it have a lot of effect? Uh, to, to do that, um, I would say this is, this is a clarification. From a staff perspective, we believe that this is already, uh, as, as Scarlett mentioned, this is already the way it is in the code. Um, this consolidates what, what is in other things or, or, um, or directed in other ways. Uh, this is to clarify that, that in, in this spot that, that, um, that there is, there is the law that it allows certain residents by type of, um, by type of dwelling unit, whether that is a residential dwelling unit, a multifamily dwelling unit, whatever that dwelling unit is, that, that those rules still apply. Um, our belief would be that that was, that was intended to be in the code. So, um, from, from my perspective, this isn't a intended to make a change, but a clarification to consolidate what we understand in the code to be and, and reiterating it here. Um, it's the same that has been applied. It's, it's, this is the method it's been applied. But as, as, as it has appeared to be, uh, somewhat, uh, unclear, um, we wanted to make sure that we clarified. It, this has been the understanding, um, and what we've operated under, um, as, as we've interpreted it from the rest of the code. But this is just calling this out specifically and saying, hey, you know what, it, it applies, the, the dwelling, the dwelling, um, type applies. As, as we have expected it to apply.
This isn't the, yeah, that's, we gave you that opportunity, so. Okay. Thank you, so.
Public hearings portion's over.
Right, so, yeah, at this point, it's the city, uh, the planning commission that will make the discussion, but appreciate that. So, um, let's, let's clarify a couple of things here to make sure we're all understanding it, yes. So, basically, the city, the city ordinance right now, or city code, allows in a residential area in a home, and just make sure, tell me if I'm right or wrong, so we're all on the same page here. Allows up to what number of unrelated people in a home? Four, right? And then.
Whether they're disabled or not disabled.
Right, just four unrelated people. And then if they had a, uh, auxiliary dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory, yeah, thank you. That, that would allow up to four as well, because it's another residence, is that correct?
Another dwelling unit and would allow up to four unrelated potential in that.
Okay, so that's the current code. And the code that we're talking about here, um, it's implied, maybe doesn't directly say it, and so you're putting this in so it directly says we follow that same policy. It doesn't matter if it's people with disabilities or anybody else, it's, it's up to four.
Rental, uh, short-term rental, um, regardless of, of those. Um, it is, it is single person, uh, unrelated up to four or, uh, head of house with, and it does specifically say how the relation to that head of house is, but it's head of house, related, um, father, mother, grandfather, grandchild. Uh, anyway, it is, the code is specific on determining what that is. It can't be just anybody that you think you're related to by blood. It's, it is specific where, where that definition is.
And so, what the city is saying is this four residents, unrelated residents in a home, applies to this, it's in the code, it's just not as clear as what you want to put by putting which complies with the laws applicable to the type of dwelling being occupied. That's just to clarify what's already in there. Um, and so the amendment isn't really changing the code. It's just changing the wording in the code to make the code more clear.
Just a definition clarification. This is in the definition section, so it's not in the use chart, it's not in permitted uses. It's not in the, um, the, what, what is allowed or not allowed. This isn't about adding something that is allowed or isn't allowed. It's not changing that, it's changing a definition. In the definition, in our administrative chapter, under, uh, three, two, that, that's our definition section. So, so this is universal to definitions throughout, but this is the definition for residents, for persons with disabilities that it's defined in the code. And we're saying, well, that, that also entails that, that it's related to the type of the dwelling unit. If it's a multifamily, if it's in single family, whatever that looks like.
Why, why does it have to say anything about the, anything about the people living there? I don't understand why there needs to be anything, disabilities, why, why is that even?
It's already in the code.
But, but why? Why, that seems unnecessary. Is there something different about that?
There's a whole bunch of laws that apply, that apply to federal and state, to that particular firm. So we wanna have it in our code, but we recognize that we are treating our code, we are respecting federal and state code. So we have that definition in our code to respect those code, federal and state codes. This is just to clarify what we already felt like we had, but you had to look through several different places. We threw out the zoning code, probably four, to try and end up with this, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one for Jay. Jay, um, military veterans eligible?
Excuse me?
Military veterans, are they eligible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All, all, all persons with disabilities, including military veterans, all of them, yes, absolutely. We are actually in network with, uh, their interns already for the current.
I ask because there is a couple of VA, um, buildings here in town. Not, not in Providence, but in the Logan area, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I know these are two different subjects, but I'm clarifying how the area is zoned that clear recovery is on. Is it commercial district? That's what I'm seeing on the zoning map.
Our current building's out.
Are, are you asking for the building in which they applied for?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, which, which they applied for. It is in a residential area, but, okay.
Single family.
Their commercial business, their commercial building that's over here is in a commercial area.
That's what people are coming and going.
Thank you.
So, thoughts that I'm having, um, so clear, clear recovery, right? Okay, I wanna make sure I'm saying it. They are here, a- and I don't think anybody's opposed to helping people with addictions. I don't think there's anybody in here that's opposed to that. Obviously, there's great value in that and I think people see that. So, um, but clear recovery in a residential area would like to have more than four people.
That's correct, yeah.
Right, and, uh, but the city ordinance, as understood, only allows up to four people. And this, this addition is to clarify that, that it only allows up to four people.
As it, as it reads currently, there is no limit in the statute for those persons with disabilities.
Well, and that, and so.
I, I don't agree with that and.
Well, and that, and.
I think the public comment period is over with.
Right, and so I think. And, and so I was just asking a clarifying question, so, yeah, so thank you. Um, and so the, the question, the question is, does, as, as understood by the city, does the code one, three, two, residence for persons with disabilities in there, uh, their understanding is, it basically says it follows all the other, the, the other code for any residency in a residential area of four unrelated people. I'm, but we don't have all that right in front of us.
Let me.
So go ahead.
Make a recommendation. This, the city council, and I say this till people get tired of it, but I think people need to hear it. All this body does is have the public hearing and then we make a recommendation, one way or the other. The city council has carte blanche authority to accept the recommendation, reject the recommendation, or modify anything in between those two as they see fit. So we're, we're part of the machinery, but we're not the ultimate decision makers.
And, and so Joe, you're saying you feel comfortable that in this particular code, it, it's clear that up to four unrelated people can be in a residence of, of any type, including those with disabilities.
Of any type.
Okay. Scarlett, did you wanna make a comment?
I just would like a minute to ask Joe a question.
You're welcome to. Any other comments? The, in my mind, the, the question is, is it clear in the code, or not clear in the code, that persons with disabilities that are unrelated, that it's clear that they follow the same policy as any other residents of four, up to four? I think that's the question. And the city feels that way, Joe feels that way. Any other thoughts?
And you're welcome. My only thought is, uh.
You're welcome.
It, it seems kinda weird that the limit is, is just based on any home. I mean, some homes are big, some homes are little. I would think a one-bedroom home, you wouldn't want four people living in there. And a six-bedroom home, you could probably have six, but.
Okay, that's, that's probably for another day, because that's not what's on the table right now. That can be brought up, but that's not on the table right now, so. Yep. Julie, Michael, anything?
The only thing I would say is that, um, our role tonight is to determine if this clarification, this code amendment, is something that we feel we would recommend or not recommend to the city council. That's our, that's our role and our responsibility and to listen to everyone. That's our, that's our role and our responsibility, and to listen to everyone that's been in attendance. That's what we need to focus on. I think for those who are in favor and, and supportive of what you're doing, Jay, and everything, that's, that to be addressed to those who have the authority or the power to make a, a change or something. That's not the planning commission.
We're, we're changing it, you're proposing a change.
We're clarifying, we're clarifying language in a code. Okay? And, and, and so, so anyway, that, I, I did direct that to him. So, bottom line is, I think that's where we're at. I think there's some confusion on what, what our role, our role is in that, and to me, it's, it's...
I'm very clear in your role, thank you.
Okay, so, so that's, that's what we're looking at doing. And I think this benefits this code. I think it benefits to clarify it, because there was some confusion about it. So, from that standpoint, you know, I'm, I'm fine. I, I, everything's been answered and all of that, so, from my standpoint. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say that when there is clarification, that's when we can actually do something about when things are clarified, adjustments, proposals, that's when it can be made. So, I just want to remind everyone that's here that the city council does listen to our meetings. They go over them in depth, and so, you being here and speaking for what you are here for is valuable, and we really appreciate it. And, so the clarification standpoint is, you know, our duty. Unfortunately, whether we do or do not disagree with certain things, like sometimes clarifications just have to happen based on current laws, so, that's all I will have to say.
So, the feeling is, if I'm understanding right, is we're not changing the code. We are rewording, we're, we're clarifying part of the code to make it more clear, but we're not changing the code.
Right, because you, the statement that's being added, which complies with the laws applicable to the type of dwelling being occupied, that's, that's all we're doing. And I think that's appropriate for, for what, what it, what purpose it's, it's achieving, so...
Any other thoughts, Bob? That was my only question. John, anything else?
Just wondering if, is there ability to get exceptions to zoning? Or is that not allowed?
The process for variances, the process to get an exception to zoning ordinances.
Okay, I'm open for any other comments or motion, or...
Let me, let me just comment. I, I told Scarlett that I was going to do this, but I think, I think I will. Someone in the audience indicated the word conflict of interest. And I went to the variance hearing and appeared on behalf of Mr. Studiger, and was told by the variance hearing officer that I didn't have standing. So, I left the variance hearing. That was a variance hearing, this is a planning commission hearing. They're not, they're not the same thing. And I don't feel I have a conflict of interest on this. So, just so that's on the record.
Well, and I would, I, I think I would say also, and, Jay, and to everybody here in support of what Jay's doing, I'm in support of what you're doing. I serve on a charity that is nonprofit charity that was started here in the value, in the valley. It is called USA Project Valor. It focuses on veterans. It focuses on veterans that are homeless, or aging, or struggling. And they do have PTSD, they have other disabilities, and we work with them. We work with them, and our whole objective is to take that program that has been successful here and take it across the state of Utah, so that there isn't any more 200 to 300 veterans living in their cars or living in a shed. So, I support you a hundred... But I also, I, I also understand that there is, there, there's code in it, it's specific for reasons. There was another situation in north, in Hyde, north, in Hyde Park. A gentleman that ran a recovery home, and they were limited, because it was a resident, to the four people. And you probably know who I'm talking about. Yeah, right, right. So, and that's been disbanded since then, and so forth. So, I want you to know, what you're doing has a tremendous place in my heart. But I also understand what we're doing here. And, and, and there's a reason why residence and that code exist, and exist in almost every municipality throughout the state, okay? Yep, so, okay.
Okay, so... So...
Yes.
Hey, we're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, I...
Okay.
I am in, I'm a resident here and everything too, and all of that. So, I want you to understand, when I started to say, I understand this and why we're doing it, and why that code is there, and I support that code, so... Okay. Yeah, I, I just, I don't want tensions to get, to get more than what we need them to be, and, and that can...
So, so the question at hand is not whether Clear Recovery is doing a good thing or not. It's, the question is, should this line be added for clarification to what's already written in the Residence for Disabilities code? I believe that's, that's the real question is. Should this be added to help clarify what's already in there? Well...
Are you calling for a motion?
Yes, that's... Then you'll need to sit down so that I can, thank you. That's what, thank you. We're, I'm, that's what I'm trying to do by clarifying exactly what we're doing. Thank you. So, yes, I'm, I'm open for a motion.
I would make a motion that the planning commission make the recommendation to the city council that we adopt the code amendment that has been proposed for City Code one three two, the definition of resident for persons with disabilities.
Thank you, I have a motion to accept the amendment. Do I have a second?
To make the rec, yeah.
The recommendation, recommend, yeah, recommend the amendment to the city council.
I'll send it then.
Okay, we have a second, Joe has, is a second. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, those in favor of the motion that was made by Michael, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight, appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, yeah. Appreciate your time, thank you.
What?
Thanks.
I don't know if I understand. Not me.
Yes.
Not me, it's, it's not me.
Yeah.
What's your name again?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're completely different. There you go, my name and numbers on the back. Appreciate it, continue doing what you're doing.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
Are you the volleyball coach?
I was on that track.
She's not anymore, but...
No, it's fine, I get it.
Okay.
It's fine, not a problem, not a, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion, if you wouldn't mind, to move item six down below item seven and take item seven before item six.
Okay, take item seven right now?
That's the next item, yeah.
Right, any, anybody opposed to doing that?
Is that, is there people here for that?
I suspect there are.
Are there, are there people in the audience here for item number seven?
Item number six?
Well, item number seven.
Item number seven, okay, let's move, if you're okay, everybody okay with that? Anybody opposed to moving to item seven and then going back to six? Okay, let's do seven. Okay. Wilson Meadows Preliminary Platte, the planning commission review, discuss, and may take action on approving the Wilson Meadows Preliminary Platte from Timberbrook Homes. Scarlett, please?
Not at two pieces in my hands. The developer is here, have questions. The current, the, one of the key things that's different than what we normally have, this property has the following deed restriction on it. It's zoned, single-family high, which means they could go down as small as 6,000 square feet in the lot sizes. However, they wanted to keep things similar to the existing area. So, they've put a deed restriction that has been recorded when they sold the property, and it says, buyer and seller hereby agree that as a condition of this transaction, the property shall be subject to a voluntary, excuse me, deed restriction to be recorded at closing, which shall run with land and be binding upon all successors and assigns. Said deed restriction shall require that upon any subdivision or development of the property, all resident, residential lots created shall have a minimum lot size of 9,250 square feet. This restriction shall be enforceable by Providence City and shall not be removed, amended, or modified without prior written consent of this city. So, that's why you will see these lots are bigger than you would normally see in an R16 zone. As with all of our land use, we look at the general plan. We also look at the moderate income housing plan, those are listed in the staff report. We look at our city code, we look at the state code, and this finding of fact was done before November 6th. On November 6th, the state recodified, well, not requalified, renumbered.
Oh, didn't they, oh my hell.
Yeah.
That's not on the mic, is it?
Upset at having to relearn the same thing, just in a different code section.
Yeah, it, it, it broke a lot of links, I'm sure.
Craig Paul complained for five minutes to me.
I'd imagine. So, anyway, this, when this was, when this was first put together, this was the way, the correct code. The new code that came out, this would be in Title X, Chapter 20, and I can't remember which part it is, because I, it's interesting to me. The one part they left in Title X, nine A, deals with residential...
Disability homes.
Disabilities. Anyway...
My computer was broke, because I went to nine A, and it was the only code section. Took me a half an hour to figure out what they'd done, because there was nothing in the bar newsletter saying that they'd done it.
Well, I'm glad that I wasn't the only person caught surprised by it, because I thought, I missed something somewhere, I'm a dummy. I did, it took me, I didn't take quite a half hour, but it took me a minute. That, I real, I looked down there and I thought, oh, those two chapters haven't been here before, so, that's where I found it. The, we are, we also look at the general plan and the master plans. This is basically the staying report that I used when I compared this for the zoning. The goal of the general plan is to provide an effective and easily understood document that may be utilized by anyone in the city, ranging from city staff appointed to make administrative and planning decisions to concerned citizens, to landowners and developers. The general plan provides a means for aligning the efforts of different city departments, boards, commissions, and the council towards achieving the overall vision for the city. We also have, utilize the moderate income housing plan, our parks, recreation, and trails plan. These first findings of facts just describe a little bit about each of those plans. The conclude, and we look at Providence City Code eight one twenty-one, water availability requirements, and Providence City Code eleven three two, preliminary plat requirements. So, the conclusions summarize how this fits within, that we have enacted ordinances for subdivision, and we do comply with the new Title X, Chapter 20. The proposed plat supports moderate income housing implementation plan for Objective One, to promote a variety of affordable housing options in the cities that are, in the city that are compatible with neighborhood character, including rental and ownership opportunities. It's really important to remember that the city does not establish the market price. So, while we may create zones and we try and work with people to have homes in a price that many people could afford, it doesn't guarantee, at this point, that it would be, that it would be 80% of median income. But it does provide more opportunities. The park, or this is adjacent to Meadow Ridge Park, a local park, and across 100 South from Zollinger Park, a regional park. There's no additional park or trail improvements at this time. The plat shows the extension of three twenty-five west is a local road. This area is included in our forty-year water plan, and it's also included in our wastewater master plan, our 2010 stormwater plan, and our 2020 culinary system plan. The water will be dedicated at the time the final plat is recorded, or they have the option of paying a fee in lieu. The stormwater plan, at the time, if you, if the, when the preliminary plat is approved, then they will move on to the final plat and construction drawings. And then, that's when the stormwater plan will be taken care of. The wastewater, the water plan, the wastewater plans, and the culinary water system and treatment, sewer treatment are all part of the impact fees. So, those will be paid at the time of the building permit being issued, or the zoning permit, excuse me. They did provide that they anticipate that their development would need 26.6 acre-feet of water. Then, it, this part is directly out of the city code, eleven three two. The, and this was sent to the developer. The, there are things in red, are things that we either need a note, or it, in some cases, it might not be addressed. Most of them are not, they're, they don't violate the zoning, but they need to be on the plat for clarification. So, that's what the things in red are. So, even if you were to prove this, staff recommends that it be done with conditions, and then a staff goes through the, when they submit their revision from our, based on this, and based on any additional conditions that you may have tonight, then the staff will make sure that each one of these are addressed, either by a note on the plat, or actual, included in the drawing. So, the... Most of them are notes, and we require that they look at utilities at least 100 feet beyond, that they look at the existing structures, at least of 100 feet beyond. Those are a few things that while they are not applicable to how the plat is going to be, how the subdivision, how the lots are going to be divided up... they're, so that city staff in reviewing, we can see how it relates to the rest of the area, and make sure that we haven't missed anything in relationship with existing facilities or structures. So that's what, that's why they need to put those things on there. They may or may not be planning to phase, they didn't put a note that says this will be built in one phase, or, and so we just want to be clear, we don't want to, because they didn't mention phasing, we don't want to think that it's going to be built in one phase and then them want to come in and do it into, for financing purposes or something. So we do want either a note, or we want them to show their phasing plan. Those are the things that are covered in red. Not every single one, but most of them to explain. As you can see, it's just extending the road from the, right next to Meadow Ridge Park on the south. It will extend it all the way to 100 South, which will complete that area down there. And they, you can see that they are providing for stormwater on those two boxes on the north end, one on the very west and one on the east, but next to the roadway, those are stormwater. They are keeping the existing house, but some of, most of the other existing buildings are being taken down as part of this. And the, the final page just showed the location of the property using the parcel viewer, so you can kind of get your orientation. Here's the roundabout, this is the gateway development, the ridge, I think that's Ridgeline Apartments, or Ridgeline Townhomes. And then here's this property right here. And Alan has been here before, and I know he does a good job, and so does Olivia, so if you don't have any questions?
I've got one question. So, when it, this was agricultural property?
Yes, it was.
That they came in for an application for R16, we recommend the city council not adopt that, but keep it at R112. The city council adopted R16 over that, or it was? What did the city council do? Because it, on the staff report, the zone says it's R16.
The, the council adopted the R16 with a deed restriction.
With the deed restriction.
Correct.
Good.
So there was a lot of, at the hearing that we had a few months ago, there's a lot of discussion about having a, a circle at the end and not, not a through street. Is that?
Yes, the neighbors wanted that, the existing neighbors wanted that, that live on the, on that street. The neighbors on 100 South didn't really speak up much, but they did send a couple of emails that said, please make sure that the, that 100 South is not the only access. So there, there was a mix of feelings down there, even though I'm sure the 100 South people realized that now there'll be traffic coming through the property. Still having two accesses is really, it was on the general plan, it's just the way we needed to go with it. But we did hear them, we, we didn't, we sympathize with their concerns. When you've lived somewhere for a very long time and you're used to not having traffic, it's a, not something you really want to have happen in your neighborhood, so I understand why they were concerned about it. But it really does make for a much safer, makes it so that people can still access Meadow Ridge Park easily. They can access Zollinger Park, walking, biking, vehicle. The parking lot for the new Thompson Field area of Zollinger Park is right across the street from here. So it's just made a lot of sense to have that be a through street.
We did, and we did help and instruct and show several, how they might apply for a a amendment to the general plan if they wanted to do that. We received none. At this point, we're bound to, to, from our side, to, to follow that general plan. It's been adopted, it's the directive of the sta, of the council. But there was sufficient, that, that we showed several how they could, how they could make that application if they wanted. Some discussed it, and, and certainly they could have made that, but there, there wasn't any action in that, in that approach. So at this point, the general plan maintains that that is a planned, general plan road to go through.
Well, and I know we were, we were looking at our 10, I think, 10,000 square foot lots, and most of them were pretty close to that. They're 90, 99,000, 9,400, 9,800. So really, the road was the only thing that really was changed and so forth, but I'm glad to see the bigger lots.
I forgot to actually read the conditions. The first condition is that they would address the comments in red, in the conclusion section. They'd address any additional comments in the engineering review, address comments in the fire marshal review, and then they continue to meet all rules and laws. Providence City's approval is not intended to, and cannot be construed to allow any laws to be violated. So those are the conditions that we, if you choose to move forward, we would recommend that you approve it with those conditions. And if you feel like there's something else you would like to add to it, we can certainly add that. We do ask that they do give us a preliminary plat that is correct and meets all the conditions. And then we sign that and have that on file. It's very important, particularly in phased product, or projects, to make sure that we have an accurate preliminary plat. So we want to make sure that's good to go before we actually move forward to final plat.
You were going to make a comment, I didn't mean, it's up to, it's up to the
No, we'll give, we'll give you a chance in just a minute, any, anything else for Scarlett?
No, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. All right, Dallin, right? Come on up.
Dallin Tolman, thank you. I appreciate the staff report, Scarlett. We, we did, I, we did address almost all of the conditions in red already. Unfortunately, it's the really busy time of the season right now, everybody's rushing before snow goes flying, so the engineer was not able to get them done until today. He knew the deadline and he, he procrastinated until it was done. So, we do have most of these conditions already met. I printed out some papers if you'd like to see them, most of them were pretty minor. The engineer had the north arrow pointing the wrong direction and just some, some silly little things like that. So, for the most part, things were, were pretty straightforward. We definitely, we do want to comply with all the codes. The reason I raise my hand is one little point on the, the cul-de-sac turnaround point. This road does not start at the base of this lot, starts a block forward. Per city ordinance is currently, you can, you have to have a through street when it extends two blocks. A cul-de-sac can only be one block, so if, if that's not more reason, just, it's not really able. I think most people realize that kind of partway through this, the process.
Cul-de-sac on the other side though, right?
Yeah, so the other one, yeah. So, so that's just a piece there, but for the most part, I mean, we, we, we want to make sure that this is a nice neighborhood. We want to make sure that it complies with all the ordinances and laws and, and so on and so forth, and we're excited to work with city staff to do so.
Okay, very good, any questions for Dallin?
Have you ever considered two cul-de-sacs, expend, so that it does meet the?
The general plan doesn't allow it. You, as a, as a planning commission member, you have to uphold the general plan. You, you can't, you can't go, you can amend it when it comes in, but we have to stick to the general plan, John.
So what, why do we even have to do anything?
Well, there's, there's a lot you can review with it, but you have to make sure it matches that. You have to make sure the integrity of that fits.
Any other comments or questions for Dallin?
No, I think, I think it looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, it says we're on item seven, that we can review, discuss, and may take action approving the preliminary plat. Any comments or any motion maybe?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the condition of the preliminary plat as long as the conditions, let me find them. The conditions of addressing the comments in red, which you said have been done, addressing the common, comments by the engineering review, as well as the fire marshal review, and that the applicant will continue to meet all of the federal, state, county, and Providence rules and laws, as stated in the application. So, yeah, I make that motion to advance this.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the preliminary plat based on the conditions, as well as the findings of fact, and conditions of law. Right?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I will include that.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Any other comments before we vote? Okay, those in favor of the motion to accept the preliminary plat, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
I oppose.
And we have one opposed. Okay. Thank you. Let me go back to the agenda here. All right, there it is. So I think we're done with item seven, thank you. And we'll go to item six. Item number six, PCC addition, PCC 1098 mining and similar activities update. The Providence City Planning Commission review, discuss, and may make a recommendation to the city council regarding a proposed new code to the Providence City Code 1098 mining and similar activities. So we had a discussion about this a few weeks ago, or a couple of months, I don't know how long, a month ago, I guess, Scarlett, please?
You did have a discussion.
And a, and a public hearing.
Yes, and some of their comments were included in, into this. Technically, this whole thing should be red, but that gets really a little bit harder to see what you looked at first and what you looked at second, because this is all new adding in. But they wanted to make sure what standards of safety we were using. So we put in that they would follow mine safety and health administration, MSHA standards, and OSHA standards. The mining area, they talked about defining the mining area, includes the entire area to be used for the mining operation, including but not limited to staging areas, crushing areas, stockpile areas, stormwater and dust control ponds, et cetera. The distance from residential structures. All sections of the mining area must be a minimum of 200 feet from the nearest residential structure. The crusher or similar machinery must be a minimum of 500 feet from the nearest residential structure. Security and fencing. Fencing, the perimeter of the entire mining area must be fenced. Fences for areas where active mining is occurring must be a minimum of six feet high, or six feet in height with locking gates. Signage, no trespassing signs are required. Additional signage such as truck entering roadway, speed limit, and hours of operations may be required. So those are the, the points that the people brought up, that they were concerned with, and, and that's the revision to meet them.
Down further, line 64 and 65?
Oh, yes. The hours of operation for onsite work and then the hours of operations, we always had hours of operation. But listening to them, it sounded like they were concerned about two different things. When they were actually going to be working on the site, and then the length of time that the trucks were going to be coming and going. So in their traffic plan, we're asking them for the hours of operation onsite, for onsite work, and the hours of operation for the truck routes. And then down at 85, what the Administrative Land Use Authority will look at to make sure that there, we, whether we approve this or not, we added a determination that, to the extent possible, truck routes avoid school zones and periods of high-volume school traffic. So, because that was one of the things they were concerned about, was kids coming home and going to school. So, that's kind of a hard thing to shut the whole city down for an hour, both in the morning and night. But we'll work really diligently if anybody ever comes and applies for this in the future, so.
Can I ask a question? We were, I think, if I remember correct, we were going to check with legal to see if we could just say there would be no mining in Providence?
Yes.
So what was the response?
You can, if we chose to do that.
We can not have mining in the city, okay.
But remember, that goes for city projects too. So if the city felt like it was more economical and feasible to dig out and crush in an area, we would not be able to do it. So, it's fine, if you feel like that was a bad experience, we don't want to have that anymore, we need to be done with it, and we're just going to say, we're not going to allow any type of mining. But that does, the city has to follow its own code.
Thank you.
How is the distance determined?
I just looked at other codes around the areas, and most of them talk about the active part. But listening to the neighbors, I felt that it was important that the entire use, property that was going to be used for the purpose be fenced and, and be a certain, a somewhat safe distance from the existing residences.
And so it would have to be a large piece of property?
It would.
To be 500 feet from, possibly from any residential, from any home or whatever, either side, so that's a football field and a half, so it's a good piece of property before they could even mine, really, if it's near housing.
If it's near housing, yes.
I, I looked it up too, that, and it seemed like it was mostly 500 to 1,000 meters. But maybe those are big mines, not this small scale mine.
That's three times.
What they're mainly using this for is to level sites for housing. They're not, they're not intending, hopefully, they're not intending to have a permanent mining operation in the city. But it's to basically use the materials onsite, so they don't have to import and export.
So is there a difference between a temporary mining facility and a permanent mining facility?
In our code, there is.
Okay, so is this the, the temporary one?
The temporary one, it talks about the temporary gravel pit, so this applies to all mining. And then the temporary gravel pit has some additional requirements to it. So in addition to everything we just read, what was already in there is that that gravel pit should, we pretty much define what it is. It provides materials to be used on the approved development or subdivision site related to infrastructure improvements, installation, or individual lot improvements, export excess materials to an offsite location. In addition to the application requirements listed below, which is down in F, an application for a temporary gravel pitch shall also include a crushing schedule, volume of material to be used onsite, and the volume of material to be exported to achieve final grading plans.
One change I would like to see is that it doesn't say, so it says a minimum of 200 feet from the nearest residential structure. I'd like it to say nearest residential property line. I'd like it to say nearest residential property line.
Okay.
Is that possible?
Yep.
Just a clarification for that, if this is, if it's one of those that are zone residential, it might actually be done with inside a residential, residentially zoned parcel.
Oh, that's true.
And so at that point, to add that, you could say the adjacent property boundary, would that be?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
We could say the nearest residential property line with an existing residential structure.
Yeah.
I think, I think you've done a good job of hitting the concerns of those who came to the public hearing. Think you've addressed those well.
Thank you.
And so now it's, you know, we, we did ask if, if you would check to see if the attorney thought we could not have mining, and so that's on the table, I guess, not having mining or having mining under these.
But I think, I think what we, I think we kind of felt like that when we took the code out of our code. But the state, bless their hearts, when they add things into the state code that fall down on top of the cities, if we don't already have something in place, then we follow the state code. And so if we want to not have mining, we still need to have this chapter. And then we just say, need to say Providence City does not allow mining and similar activities.
Yeah.
So. Or however you want to word it, but we don't wanna just say, let's not put it in. We want to put something there.
Right.
That either says, here's how we allow it, or we don't allow it.
Yep. Makes sense.
So the, the ones, the one mine, for lack of, I hate to use the word mine, but the one site that's doing the, the crushing and, and exporting some of the materials offsite and using some of the materials onsite. Are they on a steep slope at all? I, I've not gone up to look at it.
Some of the property is on a steep slope, but not where they've got, sorry, some of the property is on a steep slope, but not where they've got the, even when they moved it to the east, I don't believe it is.
Not, not more than the thirty percent, if that's what you're asking about.
No, I'm more concerned where the trucks are coming in and out. I, I had a client who, his gravel pit went by Weber High School. And it had an eleven percent slope coming down from forty-three hundred north, halfway down past Weber High School, and then into a seven percent grade, ending in a dead end street. And three independents, not my client's trucks, but three independents hauling out of the pit, had runaway trucks. And the way that we resolved that situation was to put a speed limit on trucks, prohibit shifting on the hill, and, and have a mandatory brake check before they started down the hill. And so far, it's those three elements together have saved it. So I, I don't know where these guys are coming out of, but the administrative, your administrative authority could address those issues.
They came down one thousand south to Grand View Drive. Then they went, and one thousand south for a hundred and fifty feet, I think there's a fifteen percent grade, then it levels out to the intersection down to a four percent. And then Grand View, I'm not exactly sure what the grade is on the existing Grand View Drive. That goes, there's a flat part, and then as it goes down the hill to hit Ca, Canyon Road, I'm not sure what that grade is.
It's pretty steep, oh, oh wait, they, they go down Canyon Road?
Yes, they did.
I see them go down ten south the whole way.
There were, they were going down ten south.
Okay, they changed.
To the, to the second west, the roundabout, or they were going to Grand View and down Canyon Road. So we were trying to help them to avoid any of the school zones being Ridge Line or Spring Creek or Providence Elementary.
They'd go down first east to three hundred south, and they would go down three hundred south to one sixty-five.
So they can do either, or they're just?
Yeah, at that point, we, we had two alternate, alternate options. But, but we couldn't, without this ordinance, we couldn't really force them one way or the other. This allows us to get a, a travel plan and, and work with them on, on some of that trucking. So anyway, that's one of the pieces. And I would say to yours, whether the steep slopes, there is some steepness, because I would expect that, that along that, that east bench is where this may be of interest. Whether it's the south where the, this was at, or farther north, you look at, along that bench, there's a lot of, of rock base. And it may be the way that each of those develop. There, there could be that potential, so there, there could be steepness. I, I, I would say it's highly likely that there will be a, a steepness element to any of those developments, because it's likely, more likely than not, to be on the east bench, the east hill. So.
Well, is adding a tool to allow the administrative land use authority to set the conditions, should that be something in the ordinance that would allow you guys to set that?
I think that's good guidance, I, I hadn't thought about it, but I think it's good guidance, to be honest, yeah.
Yeah, I can work something into that.
Well, it's, you know, wasn't a happy situation down in Pleasantview, when three trucks ran past Weber High School.
No, it wouldn't have been.
But yes, I believe there's, there's gonna be slope involved. If, if I can envision where this may happen, and not just the spot that it happened, it's along slopes.
Yeah. Well, you know, those three elements have resolved the situation. Hopefully, knock on wood.
Well, if you move this forward, you could certainly add that in, in motion, or we can add that and come back.
What's, what's the city's preference? Do you want it, I mean, I, I just wanna give you the tools to?
I think having a tool is good, I, I mean, if they come in and, and this happens and we can use this, the clearer the, the tool, the better it is for the staff. The clearer you can make it for the, for the one operating and the clearer for the staff. We like well-defined and, and clear.
Just a question about the operation, are they taking material down the hill?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they're building up the hill, so why are they taking it out?
Great question, great question. So at this point, there is some, some, some hill, and they're taking out the slope. So, so it, it kind of slopes up and then comes back down in humps where they were at, where they're, where they were. I think the crusher there has been removed, so there was a hill, they're removing that and leveling that grade. So if you, if you go onsite and look to the north, that road kind of cuts the ground, and they're looking to take basically road grade across the property rather than the, the hump that's there, does that make sense?
I think so.
So they're, they're cutting it out and removing a sizable portion, sixty to eighty thousand yards of material.
Okay, very good, thank you, Scarlett. All right, so we're looking at taking action, we may take action on this regarding the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you need to make a motion, but it's.
May, may make a recommendation, yeah, not, thank you. To the city council. I do feel like what Scarlett brought up, they've covered very well, the, the concerns of the residents. And there were two, if, if we go with, with the updated, what, what's the word I'm thinking of, the updated proposal, there were two things added tonight, right? Will you share those again?
So there was the distance from
An existing property?
Property line with an existing residential structure on it. And then the conditions, giving the land use authority the ability to establish conditions for truck travel on steep grades.
I think those are good recommendations.
Including but not limited to prohibiting shifting on the hill.
Well, I didn't list the whole thing yet, but I will.
Speed limits for trucks.
Brake checks.
Yeah, great.
Right, so if you leave it more generic, you can tweak it as you need, I guess, right? So. Okay, any other comments or any motions?
Our motion person left.
And by the way, Michael had to leave, asked to be excused, so Bob will be voting with us now, so. So you can make a motion if you'd like as well. Not hinting or anything, but somebody'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I might need some help, Joe. I make a motion to adopt the changes.
Make a recommendation to the?
City council.
A recommendation to the city council to adopt the changes in the mining and
Similar activities.
Similar activities, item number six. With the changes that we just adopted.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
And Bob seconds. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, those in favor of recommending this based on the motion that was given by John to the city council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we have one more item on the agenda.
Can I ask to be excused? My wife was in the hospital for seven or eight days, and I need to get home.
You probably should do that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is this urgent, is this a?
That's what I was gonna say. I, this is just something we need to.
But it could be table till the next meeting?
Yeah, we don't, we're not under, I mean, we don't wanna put it off for a year, but.
But maybe the next agenda.
Putting it as a steady item on the next agenda would be fine.
Okay. Any, anybody opposed to that? Agree with that, then, then do we have any other kind of motion, like to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor, aye. Anybody opposed, wants?